Welcome everyone to the Reno County Commission meeting on January 26, 2021. We'll call this meeting to order and first on the agenda, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a prayer with Pastor, Senior Pastor Michael Thompson DeGrief from Trinity United Methodist Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Pastor Michael, you're up now.
Okay, thank you. Let us pray. Almighty God, we give thanks for this day of life and we give thanks for the leaders that you've called to serve on the county commission. And we give thanks for your holy presence in our lives, which brings new life out of destruction and hope out of despair and growth out of difficulty. We thank you that you do not leave us alone, but you labor to make us whole. And so help us to perceive your unseen hand in the unfolding of our lives and to attend to the gentle guidance of your Holy Spirit, that we may know the joy that you give to your people. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor.
Yes, thank you.
We'll go on now to public comments on items not on the agenda. Is there anyone out there?
Commissioner, do you, I also gave everyone a copy of Dorothy Barnett had sent an email during the public comment.
There is nobody. Okay, then you want me to read this? Yeah, okay. Says this is from Dorothy Barnett and she was unable to be here, but she wanted to make a public comment. Chairman Hurst, Commissioner Friesen and Commissioner Sellers, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to view your Wind Energy Conversion System Work Study Meeting held on 1/19 of this month. Transparency and the decision-making of our elected officials is something all of us should be grateful for. While I appreciate the transparency, there were several things I found troubling about the meeting itself. Like many in Reno County, I have been following the Reno County Planning Commission's work to update the wind regulations closely. As a content expert, working in this field for 14 years, I provided technical information based on the best available peer-reviewed scientific data on several key issues, including setbacks, shadow flicker, health and sound impacts. Each of you, along with the Planning Commission members, were invited to attend elected officials workshops where Kansas content experts from the Kansas Department of Wildlife Parks and Tourism, Wichita State University, the Kansas Department of Commerce, Olson and the Advanced Power Alliance provided additional data on health and safety of wind turbines, information on siting, property values and the economic impacts. I believe two of you participated in the workshop as well as some members of the Planning Commission. Throughout the Planning Commission process, there were some decisions I did not agree with. However, the process was fair and I believe members of the Planning Commission took all the materials they were provided into account when they came up with the current draft regulations sent to you for approval by a five to one vote. Each member of the Planning Commission, planning staff and county commission I have spoken with about this issue over more than two years has repeatedly said they don't want regulations so stringent that wind development will not be able to come to Reno County. If that is still your goal, I encourage you to accept the regulations that were presented to you by the Planning Commission. Thank you for your time, Dorothy Barnett, who is the Executive Director of Climate Plus Energy Project. Since there are no other persons wanting to make a public comment today, we will go to the determine additions or revisions to the agenda. And we have two additional agenda items and that is the appraisal corrections 2021, days 30 and 31.
That under the consent agenda?
Under the consent agenda, yes. And I believe that the new agenda, and it also has, but I'll go over these anyway. Item F on the business items is salary compensation study. And item G is the second review of commission meeting policy. Are there any other additions? Oh, one other comment, we will scratch the executive session, item number 10, we'll delete that from today's agenda. Are there any other additions or corrections?
Mr. Chairman, if the, if you other two commissioners are willing, I'd like to request the appointment of myself as an ex officio director to the Hutchinson Recreation Commission be made. If that's put on the agenda, I'll explain why I'm requesting that at this point in time.
Would you like that under the consent agenda, wherever?
No idea, I mean, that's what you described.
I think it should be a business item because it needs to be explained.
Okay, that'll be item H. The appointment of ex officio status of Commissioner Sellers, which he has had a regular status on the board.
Correct.
So to the Hutch Rec Commission.
Mr. Chairman, I've got two items as well, one similarly. And, and there was some discussion prior to my time on this commission of, of trading places with Commissioner Sellers as ex officio on, on the startup Hutch Board. And if he's agreeable to that, I'd like to discuss that item as well.
All right, we'll put that under I. Is that right? Is that okay?
Yep.
It'll be at the end, yes.
That'll be at the end. That was one of them. Now, do you have another one?
Yeah, if, if the rest of the commission agrees, there was comment from county counselor regarding whether this board should address whether or not we'll be taking public comment on the proposed wind energy regulations and whether we should do that in a, a more uniformed fashion at some point in our deliberation or not. So I'm just bringing that up for discussion. I don't.
Okay, item J regarding the, if I'm hearing correctly, Daniel, that would be public comment regarding the regulations?
It may be helpful just to get rebriefed on that from the county counselor, if that's all right with you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Okay, put that under J. I'm running out of space here. Writing too big, I think. Any other additions or revisions?
Mr. Chairman, make sure you have the revised agenda. It has all those items, but it just has made different letters just for your information.
Okay.
That's what was put out Friday.
You aren't going to get me confused here, huh? Okay, okay, if there are no other additions or revisions to the agenda, we'll go to the consent agenda, which includes vouchers of $509,813.49. It includes C R F vouchers, the care vouchers of $68,846.45. Would be change orders 20, 21, 30 and 31. Which you have, commissioners have received that. What does the commission wish to take action on the consent agenda?
I would move that we approve the consent agenda, items A, B and C.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, roll call please.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes. Going on to the business items that we have is C D B G C V grant fund award. Randy, would you like to explain that for us?
Okay, the Reno County received the C D B G C V grant last summer for coronavirus. We originally had 132,000, 120,000 of that could be used for giving to small businesses. The other 12,000 was for the grant administrator. The committee had met toward the end of 2020 and had distributed all but $11,067.14. We put out a request or put out the application process again for people and Special K-9 Dog Training and Country Resort LLC had incurred, they applied and had incurred expenses that qualified of $21,753.48. What we have remaining is $11,067.14. And you can see on the screen, it kind of shows everyone that has C D B G funds, everything that has been spent. The total cost over in the far right column to get to the total of 120,000. The committee recommends the county commission to award Special K-9 Dog Training and Country Resort. The remaining $11,067.14 of the C D B G C V grant. If this is approved, that will end the amount of money, that will account for all the money we have in this grant. And it was a unanimous vote on, from the committee.
Is there any questions regarding this?
I don't, I don't have any questions. I didn't want to know that. I've used that business in the past and they are good business and one I think worthy of, of the program. And I'd make a motion to approve the recommendation on business item A.
Second. It's been moved and approved to approve the C D B G C V grant award as presented. Any discussion? If not, roll call please.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes. Next is the purchase of a replacement backup generator for the Health Department. Is Harlan available? Harlan and Pew Maintenance Director and Carla Nichols, Health Department Director.
Carla won't be here, but Harlan should.
Carla is extremely busy, as all the Health Department is right now with, with arranging the vaccination program.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be ready to approve this based on the recommendation provided in the packet.
Harlan's not here yet.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and approved, moved to approve the purchase of a replacement backup generator for the Health Department as presented. Any discussion?
I would just say, you know, completely understand the importance of, of the backup generator for maintaining electricity for the refrigeration units needed for the vaccine right now. And so it's obviously an important investment for this county.
I would agree because they have vaccinations on hand all the time for different. No further discussion, roll call please.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes. All right. Now, the Transportation Alternatives Project, ADA Bus Shelters, Barbara Leehan.
Good morning, Commissioners. How are you? I wanted to update you about the Transportation Alternatives Grant that we received back in 2017. And as I wrote in my agenda request, our original grant was written for a county match of $19,130. And the project did not go as planned. We were planning to do this in conjunction with the City of Hutchinson Engineering Department, but that was not as an option in the end. And so the final cost that was brought to us was $168,000, I think, yeah, $168,122. So to me, we have lost the financial advantage of utilizing this grant. My recommendation to you is that we withdraw. There are no penalties for us to do that. And I think that would be the premium.
I understand your request. Are you in the process of approaching this from a different manner?
Yes, absolutely. This is something that we can accomplish as we were before we started with the hope that we would have the grant money to do this. And at that time, I was putting in some capital money into each budget. And we were able to build the bus shelters individually. We will still be working with the engineering department at the City of Hutchinson. There are a lot of regulations that were attached to the grant when we moved it out of that venue. We'll be able to accomplish the same thing. We will have ADA compliant bus shelters. But we will be doing it with our local money rather than with, with match money. It's been a couple of years now since we built them because we were waiting on the grant, but we were able to build those for around $5,000 apiece.
How much?
$5,000.
$5,000 apiece?
Yeah. So if we were to put $70,000 toward that project, you know, we could get a lot of them done. So, so we'll, we'll be able to proceed and in fact, we have a shelter that we will be putting up pretty soon in front of the library. That was something that we worked with the city on when they were doing the streetscape there at that point. And we did install one at Elmdale in November, I think. So, so we're proceeding, but again, just through our local money.
And you'll be working with the city for the engineering details?
Yes, yes, absolutely. And in fact, we, we have the engineering plan to utilize and so we'll be able to proceed. It, it worked very well when we were working with the city because they were very generous in letting us work with the concrete bid that they had for the city. And so we would just work out the details for when it was convenient. If they had cement at the end of a run or something like that, we would be able to, to get the, you know, the slaps put in place. You know, but we don't have that many, you know, we've only got four, you know, across the city right now.
And how many would you expect in the future?
Well, you know, the city kind of has changed over time, but originally we were hoping to put in between 15 and 18 across the city. But our city looks a lot different now than it did four years ago, you know, so we eliminated some of the stops that we had identified. I think we have right now 11 solid places that we would like to put them in places that we believe will continue to serve the community for, no matter what happens with our businesses.
But you see this happening over several years?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion that we withdraw from the Transportation Alternatives Project ADA Bus Shelter Grant.
I take it that I have a question for Barbara. I appreciate the, the detail in your report. Is, is there not a way to repurpose this money somewhere else? That's, I understand kind of the convolution here of engineering expenses and, and your point about it not being worth it. But is there a way to repurpose it or is it just so focused that we can't do that?
So the, the $20,000 for our match, was that the money intended?
So I guess what I'm looking at is we've got $95,000 of, of grant money on the table that we're going to give back. And if there was a way to repurpose that somehow?
Through KDOT? That's an excellent question. I don't know if they would allow us to do that or not or if that grant has closed since it was almost four years ago. But that's certainly a question that I can ask.
I guess for that reason, you know, you know, it's almost $100,000 if, just, I don't think it would hurt at this point to ask the question.
So are you suggesting that we ask that question before we proceed with the motion to?
Yeah, I think it might be worth, before we give it back, to just see if there's a less complicated way to use this funding, obviously. It sounds like you have some similar projects on the table, but the complexity of the engineering was the primary factor here.
Yeah, it was.
If we haven't asked that particular question, I, I'd be, I'd be interested in that.
Okay, I can do that.
Okay, then I would withdraw my motion. All right. If that's all right with the commissioners? Okay, I need to have a couple, one other question anyway. You say you're, this was for 11?
Well, originally, the grant was originally for between 15 and 18. And so, so we have now, I feel like because of the changes that occurred over time, I think we have 11 places that, that we would really like to have shelters. So we'll be working toward those particular locations.
And these would be covered or weather protected?
They, they would be exactly like we have now, which are, it's the barrel shaped shelter. With the, the ADA compliance lab.
Did we plan on right away acquisitions or approvals prior to this?
So, no, that was another part of that. Originally, you know, the, the whole intent of the grant was that we would not go into any right of way acquisition, that we would be building within the city right of way and the city had granted us license to put shelters within the city right of way. So when the engineering firm looked at that, they're in, they believed that there were places where in the construction of the project, they were going to need to infringe upon the right of way of the property. The shelter itself would be within the right of way, but while they were building, they were going to have to place some of the dirt and that kind of thing on there. And when you do a federal project, that means you have to receive permission from the owner of the property during that time. So there's a certain acquisition that you have to go through. So that was one issue. Another one was that in one of the areas where we wanted to put a shelter, the rights of way of the city within the city proper are not uniform across the whole city. And this was in an older part of town and the sidewalk, right of way, I'm going to call it, was more narrow than other places within the city. So there was some concern, again, during the construction project or possibly even the shelter itself might extend a couple inches, you know, over what the current right of way was within the city, but that would again require acquisition.
No more comment. No more comment. All right, so I, I feel it, commissioners, that you would like to have a report at some further date with regard to this use of the, the grant money. Is that correct?
Yeah, Barbara thinks it's reasonable.
I, I think it'll just be a matter of me making a phone call to the project manager and seeing if those funds can be redistributed in a, in a different way.
All right. Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you.
She's up next. So next, I believe you're up next in the Aging Public Transportation Department update.
Yes. I hope you had an opportunity to look through the document that I prepared for you. And I know it, it went into quite a bit of detail, but I felt that was important because the Department of Aging and Public Transportation was a department that came into being because it was something that people of Reno County wanted. And I feel that's really an honor and a special thing about our department because other parts of our county government are things that are, are needed just, and, and so they are put into place. But we were picked by the people. And so again, just to kind of give you a background about why aging and public transportation are together because it, it is kind of an interesting arrangement. But the history of how all of this came about is through congressional acts and that transportation was something that they identified as being in need of people that are over age 60. And so there was transportation money placed in aging departments early on. And then we saw a change within our community and across other communities as well. That public transportation in more rural areas was something that was needed as well. And so from that, money became available through rural transportation grants through the FTA. And that's how our cat was born and that's why the two things worked together because the Department of Aging had experience with doing public transportation in one part of the community. And so then we became the custodians of the general public transportation program as well. So I, I just, I, I find that interesting myself and I was hoping that you might find it intriguing as well as to how those two things came about. So I thought it was important also for you to look at the way the grant funding works. It is based on the state calendar year, which is July 1 through June 30. So every year, we're working with our county budget, which is of course, the school year calendar year based. And so we're 50% of the time working on county budget and planning and then 50% of the time we're working on the KDOT grant, which is based on the state year. So we always kind of have this six month period of time where we're, we're anticipating things, we're planning the budget. We're, we're hoping that it all, that it all flows together and works out. And so far it has. But that timing is kind of something that we always have to keep in mind. So I, I think the way the funding works is also interesting. In that we write the grant in November and we write, it's actually three segments. There's a part where we do our operating funds, we do administrative funds and then we do capital funds. So when Reno County pledges our match, it is actually 50% match to the federal dollars on the operating side. However, Kansas is fortunate in that every year, KDOT has pledged 20%, but we can never count on that. So when we, when I prepare the match, I always have to plan that it is actually 50% of the dollars for Reno County. So in one respect, you might say we're kind of over budgeting. However, we're felt, we are held to that. We're, we have to do that every year. So, so the operating dollars are matched 50%, but it ends up being the county provides 30%. So that's why that's outlined in red in your documents, so you can see that. Then the administrative funds are 80/20 and that's a solid match. There's no state funds involved in that. And then the capital awards are also 80/20. So all of our buses that we have running around town, 80% of those were paid for through federal dollars. The grant is also, it ties us to uphold all of the federal regulations that the FTA outlines. And I know there have been questions in the past about providing local transportation in a way that we would like to see it done. However, the grant prohibits us from going outside the regulation. And that, that again is important for us to understand. With that said, we can ask for things through KDOT. And many times they're willing to grant us opportunities. One of the things that we do every year, except in 2020, was to provide transportation to the community Thanksgiving dinner. And they, that's certainly not something that we would have on our schedule to do every day, but they allow that as long as we provide that to anyone who wants to ride. We can't have any restrictions. It's first come, first served, general public transportation, and no strings attached. So they allow us to do that. We've also done a couple other small things. We do the Hyde Park luminaria. We've done a Christmas lights tour. And then we also have helped with Tex mentoring day each year. Whenever there are tours that county government or other government officials would like to have, that's an allowable thing because it is a governmental type of thing. Last year, we were allowed to provide transportation for emergency management planning. When they were doing, there was a forester who came down to look at fire control. And it was a hands-on learning thing and they needed some transportation. We were allowed to do that as well. So we do have restrictions, but we can do some things as long as it fits within the umbrella that they have asked us to follow. So wanted you to be aware of that. Did you have any questions about how things operate?
Barbara, I read the report, but, and I might have missed it, so please correct me if I did. But I didn't see any information on comparing numbers of riderships in the history. I saw numbers for last year, but I didn't. So I guess I'd like some information about how last year compared with previous years.
Last year, you know, you saw we were, we were down significantly down. But overall, we tend to go in peaks and valleys, but most of the time we run around 120,000 rides a year. Now, in 2019, I think it was 117,000 something rides. It does fluctuate, you know, over time. We've tried to identify, you know, why those things happen. It's somewhat, I, well, it's not somewhat, it is weather dependent. And so when we have periods of time when we have more inclement weather, our riders are not out and doing things. So the wind also affects, you know, some of that as well. But overall, that's probably a good solid number, around 120,000 rides a year. So last year we were down significantly. The shutdown, you know, obviously impacted us. We are continuing to see that. Many of our people are choosing to stay at home or only take essential trips. Medical trips are of course still something that we do very regularly for people. So I can provide you with that. I didn't think to do a trend line to follow the, you know, past 10 years or so.
I guess if you could just provide it to us maybe as a supplement, I'd appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Maybe a 10-year trend line or something. And it does make sense that weather impacts your ridership.
Yeah. So also just, I wanted you to be aware of the fleet and what we have. Our oldest vehicle is a 2013 and they run through 2013 to 2019. Industry standard is 100,000 miles. It's when you want to start looking at replacing. And that is when the grant allows us to do that. We have the buses on a very good schedule. So we're watching the mileage every month, making sure that all of the buses are getting used, obviously, but then also making, paying attention to make sure we meet that mileage marker by November of each year. So, you know, I have a spreadsheet where we look at where the buses are and which ones need to leave the fleet next. Some of the buses need to leave through no fault of their own. If we have, we have a bus right now that is actually not that old. I think it's a 2018 and it has been in multiple, multiple accidents. And so that does take a toll on the vehicles. Of course, we get them repaired right away. And thankfully, they have not been our fault. So, you know, it has been no cost to the county. How I say that, we did have one incident with that bus earlier in November. It was a hit and run. First time we've ever had that happen. But we had, the bus was stopped to pick up someone and car behind it hit the bus and really messed up the back end and fender and drove away. And we never found them. The police have not found them. So, you know, we're going to bear the cost. Our insurance is going to bear the cost of that repair. But so for the most part, we look at, you know, of course, body condition, accidents, whether, you know, we've had trouble with the engine and that kind of thing. But for the most part, my decisions, you know, when I frame that is based on mileage. And so we look at that very closely all the time and we're making sure again that we're getting, I call it even wear on all the buses and making sure that we're not over utilizing one and under utilizing another. We do have some that are our favorites and that we would like to run them more. But, but we stick to that very regimented schedule. And then I write the grant every year. My plan is to replace three vehicles every year if possible. So the grant that I submitted in November is for three route buses. We currently have a grant that, and it actually would have been for buses that we would have received this year. COVID kind of made that go on the back burner. We are going to get low floor buses. We'll have a grant for three low floor buses. We had a vendor bring a low floor for us to look at yesterday. It's a new model. But I'm working with Flint Hills Transportation Out of Bus out of Manhattan. We're working on this together with KDOT. And because they were awarded one, we were awarded three. And so we're working on the procurement documents for that. Our timeline for that particular bus will be that, we'll be writing that procurement document in July and then releasing that out for bid at the end of August, September, making the award in October. One of the things we have to keep an eye on are the chassis availability by the different manufacturers. And again, COVID has impacted that. So we'll see how that works. It's going to be toward the end of the year. Hopefully, there'll be some chassis that are left over. And they'll be able to get that going for us pretty quickly into 2022. So we really, we have a very nice fleet and we take care of it very well. Right now, with all the extra cleaning that we're doing every time that a bus goes out, if it's run, then it comes back into the barn and it's completely scrubbed and detailed before it goes back. Before, we were doing that about every three days, but now we're doing it every day so that we can assure that people riding are in a very clean environment.
Barbara, another question. Your report includes a recap of the transportation shuttle you're doing for Wichita.
Yes.
And if I recall, you've only had four rides in a, over a year's time on that. And I think you explain it well, that it's awkward, or it would appear to be awkward on time and then the cost when you had everybody's cost up to the participant. It would seem like to me that we ought to get rid of that. Is there a way to do that or do we have to? I think the state suggested that we do, didn't they?
They did. The thing that, that is true is that that's on demand. So we only operate it, we've only operated it four times period. So it's just like a ride that someone would request to go for a medical appointment here.
So it doesn't really take any ongoing staff time?
No, no, it does not. And we just, when somebody calls, then, you know, we have our software set up so that we can plug it into that particular configuration. And it doesn't, it, it's like any other ride. It's just that it's going to Mount Hope rather than it's going to an actual facility.
So it doesn't take any coordination with those other agencies that pick up at Mount Hope?
No, you know, a phone call, you know, and so to let them know that we have a ride.
So you think we should continue to do that?
I think so. The other reason for that is KDOT awarded us one of our vehicles at NOK so that we could do the program. So they, they have great hope that this kind of thing will become more prevalent, more used. And it is a valuable thing for the people that need that ride. It's important.
Okay.
It is. It's just, to me, the cost for, for the people is, is still expensive.
Barbara, on that point, I just wondered if we've fully utilized our new communications staff to make sure we're getting the word out. And I would encourage you to do that if, if, if you haven't. Have we worked with, like, can we work with, like, large employers? Do we work with large employers that may have, you know, workforce that commutes between Wichita and Reno County? Have we ever thought about that or is that something you can do?
That, that's, there's actually a program that KDOT was offering called Job Jet. And that is something that, that was important, you know, for, to work on for a while. We didn't have anything in Reno County at that time, but that doesn't mean that it, that we shouldn't relook at that because that's been a while ago now.
I'd just be curious if some of the larger employers may, if they offered it, whether there would be, you know, an interest in kind of this, you know, pooling of, of, of transport. But I was just also wondering if you had any statistics on capacity use? You know, I saw there were some vans and there's some larger buses. In general, what the capacity is on, on a bigger bus versus a van? Are we filling them to half capacity or full capacity or?
So the way, the way that works for fixed route, we're going to, I'm going to talk about non-COVID-19 because that's been the most of our experience. So the buses have a capacity of 15 minutes, including the driver. So we have peak hours and then we have hours that are off hours. During peak hours, we can have a full bus, which would be, you know, we would have 14 passengers. They're probably not all on at the same time because people that are, they're getting on and they're getting off, you know, throughout the time. I don't have the statistics available for you right now, but I can get them to show ridership for a particular bus, a particular route. But off the top of my head, I can tell you that one of the more popular routes would give close to 1,000 rides each month, you know. And so just as an idea, of course, it's not 1,000 different people. That's just, that's 1,000 rides. So if they get on or get off, they're counted again.
Yeah, my, my question was just more pointed towards if we've sized the vehicle appropriate for the route and not oversized it, you know, I'd hate to see a, you know, expensive bus be, you know, transporting just a couple people every day as an example. So that'd be good to understand.
Sure. We do have some routes that are, we call it lighter than others. The destinations are heavily weighted toward the east part of the community. But we have routes that go all over. So the routes that are going to the northwest are again lighter than they are the ones that go up Maine and go south into South Hutchinson. So, so there is that. So I think your question is, should be, we be running a smaller vehicle on those lighter, lighter areas and save the larger buses for the more heavily traveled? One of the things we've, we've looked at is actually having two buses run the same route. Kind of they would tail each other because sometimes we have to turn people away because we are too full. Right now, the buses are all socially distanced. So at this point in time, we have a capacity of six and we are definitely at capacity all the time. Well, you know, I don't know how long we will be under those kinds of restrictions. But at this point in time, we can only take six people.
Yeah.
And we're running additional para service so that if someone is displaced because there wasn't room on the bus or if because their hourly route has been eliminated due to COVID, they can call and we will go and one of our para buses will be able to pick them up. So.
Yeah, well, perhaps next year when hopefully things get back to normal, we can look at the capacities again and see if there may be an opportunity for, you know, a change in the size of a particular vehicle or, or route change to make things more efficient. But appreciate that. And I appreciate the report. And it's clear, based on all of the information you have in there, that you've got a very good grasp on your department. And I also appreciate all your work on the grant opportunities that are available. It's certainly really good to hear when, when department heads focus to, to find alternative, you know, financial resources for the county. So thank you for your work in that.
I appreciate that.
Barbara, one more question. You had some criticism, including some from myself, when you changed the, what do you call it? Connection point to?
Oh, to Walmart?
To Walmart.
Yes.
It's so far away from the door, but I heard in a report a while back that you said that that's working just fine.
It is. Yes. And people really appreciate, you know.
And so the people that you serve are happy with that?
They are happy with it, yes. And of course.
So the government leaders ought to stay out of the deal, huh?
It's always nice to listen to the users and the ones that benefit. So I appreciate, you know, your standing behind us on that. I want to talk just a little bit now about the Department of Aging and the work that we do. So the Department of Aging is all encompassing, I'm going to call it. But our, the majority of our work is through intake and referral. So people can call us and we listen to their situation. And then usually we can refer them to the correct organization or agency and we can help make those connections for them. So we're kind of a clearinghouse because nobody knows who to call, you know, about certain situations in their life. And, and so they call us and, and again, we can help with that. We do follow very closely the Older Americans Act for that. So we do information and referral information and educational services. We work with other organizations within the community and I identified who we call are our funded agencies. But the bulk of our budget actually does go out to help in small ways to bolster other organizations and agencies in our community because they provide services for the elderly that we can't. So a good example of that is Interfaith Housing because one of the concerns we hear many times is mom can't get into her bathroom anymore. The door is too small and she's now in a wheelchair. Or they have allowed water damage to create a problem with the floor in the bathroom. And what can you do about that? Mom can't take a shower because the shower's not safe or the bathtub's not safe. Well, obviously, those are things that would keep people in their own home much longer, but it's not something that our department has capacity to go out and do. Now, in the early days of the department, they actually would go out and hire people independently to go out and perform the work. But that quickly outgrew the ability of the department to, to meet those needs. And so they began to partner with organizations in the community. And one of them is Interfaith Housing. So when we have someone who calls us and tells us So when we have someone who calls us and tells us the story about mom not being able to get into the rooms anymore, can't, their bathroom is falling into, um, disrepair, then we can call Interfaith Housing. We do an assessment of the home with the, the client and they fill out paperwork for, uh, Interfaith Housing. So we go out and, and view the situation and agree that yes, this repair would keep this person in their home longer and, and safely in their home longer. Um, because, you know, we would, um, we would not want someone to do this strictly as, I'm gonna fix this up and then sell my home, you know? So we, we want to believe that this person is going to be well-served by this and that they will be able to stay in their own home. What happens after we get the repair done? We don't know, but we base it on our decision, uh, best decision at the time. So we work with Interfaith to get, um, small home repairs like that completed. And that, again, is just an example of one of the organizations that we work with. But part of our budget does go out, um, to the community in that way. We also provide funding to the senior centers across the county. And the majority of that money is dedicated to utilities or any janitorial services that they need, um, just kind of the very basic things that they need to, um, to have a senior center in operation. So it takes the burden of fundraising, uh, away from them. Um, there have been a couple senior centers that have done some major renovations. I'll go back to bathrooms because, uh, one of the senior centers was meeting in a school, grade school, and the doors on the bathrooms were very small. They were not compliant with ADA and was something that became an issue. So we helped with renovation of that because, again, um, it would prohibit them from being able to utilize that facility any longer if they didn't have those necessary changes done. So we work, again, uh, across the community with different partners to meet the needs of the people in, over the, over the age of 60. Uh, I did include the senior center participation information. I thought you might just kind of find that interesting for the different communities. And many of them have been closed throughout last spring and some of them are still closed. They were starting to do just a few things and then fall hit and they, they did not feel comfortable doing that. But they remain vigilant, you know, and they, they want to try to keep their community connected. So they're doing the best they can under that situation. The Senior Farmers Market Program, um, I kind of outlined that. Usually I talk about that every year when it comes around. That's a really good program and it's very, very popular. This year, uh, it really made us think, how can we do this? How can we provide this service to the community, but how can we all be safe? So we piloted, uh, the process that I outlined for you. It was a little detailed. It ended up, I think we spent maybe, I want to say maybe $300 in postage, you know, with all of the back and forth that we ended up doing, but we felt that was well-spent. We also were able to put that down as part of the work that we did with SCK AAA on one, on our report. So technically, you could say that the grant money that they provide to us throughout the year covered that cost. But again, very popular. We wanted to offer it and we feel like it was well worth the money for the people. Uh, Medicare Part D, again, that was a challenge because we wanted to offer it, but all summer long, we kept saying, how can we do this? How can we not, you know? Um, and we came up with the idea of doing the cell phones with the worksheet to collect the information. That worked, but it was really arduous for the people, um, to do, for the volunteers that were calling people back. One of the overall concerns we had was being able to reach people after they had turned in their documents to us and being able to catch them, you know, at a good time so that they could go over the information with them. So it took a lot of calling back and forth. We served about half what we normally would. But we anticipated that a lot of people would probably choose to just stay set with where they were, no matter what this year. They were not going to be interested in making a change. Um, those that did, you know, hopefully they benefited from that. We don't have the statistics yet back from, um, the Kansas Department of Aging and Disability Services. We input all of the changes that we make for people. And so, um, I'm gonna say as a rule of thumb, we always say if somebody changes, it's usually about a thousand dollars difference to them, to the good. So it can be more and it can be less, um, but overall about a thousand dollars. KDOT has started to track that information and so we put that all into a state portal. And eventually we'll have, hopefully, some statistic that will come back and tell us how much money Reno County saved for people over that time. Um, the volunteers were wonderful and, uh, we, uh, so appreciated their work because, you know, we have two people in the office, really, uh, two and a half people in the office that do that work. There's no way that we could reach this many people, you know, without their help. And the last thing I wanted to mention, I actually forgot to put on the report, is our grocery delivery program. And that's been operating now for about three years. And we have currently, there are 13 people who are receiving grocery delivery twice a month. And this involves 36 volunteer shoppers. They don't all go out every week and shop, but there are 36 people that are on the list of shoppers who will go into the stores and shop for people. And we have three drivers that go out and do actually perform, um, the driving services and the delivery of the groceries into the home. That represented 386 hours and the cost to the county for that last year was $814. So again, we feel like it's a really good investment. We're utilizing a retired ARCAD van that is in really good repair and hasn't had any problems to speak of, some little things, but nothing, nothing too bad. So good service and one that we want to continue because that reaches the people that live outside of Hutchinson. There is a, a delivery program and, uh, well, there are many things now available to people that live in town, but not so much for those that live in the rural areas. So.
Uh, Barbara, in your, uh, document that you gave us, the primary source of funding for the Reno County Aging Department is the Reno County Elderly Mill Levy Tax.
Yes. Yes.
Would you or Randy discuss what that is because, uh, I am not familiar with that?
That, that is, um, currently for two, for 2021, we're at .382% of a mill. Um, the elder, and when I started my story this morning, I was telling you that we were chosen by the people. And we were, we were chosen by them. And so that's where the mill levy comes in. So on everybody's tax statement, there's a little bit of money that comes in to the Department of Aging. And it's that .382%.
And how is that, uh, number arrived at, Randy?
It's in the state budget form, but it's, we keep it relatively consistent.
So we're, we're leaving it at the same mill, mill place?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll, I'll watch closer this year on the budget to, to see it. Uh, and how many years ago was that, that it was put on?
1974. It was voted in, so it was probably, uh, the following year, 1975. Um, and at that time, when they were getting started, it, the question was up to one mill. So, so at that point, when they got started, I think they probably gave them the full mill. Valuation was probably less at that time too, but they were also starting. So now that does fluctuate. Um, I don't think, ooh, I don't think in the almost 11 years that I've been here, I don't think we've ever gone over half, uh, a mill. And again, valuation does depend on that. Our budgets do tend to be pretty similar from year to year. The fluctuations would be, of course, salary, you know, that's always the big, you know, uh, thing for our department. Uh, on our CAD side, you know, we never know what gasoline is gonna do. That's a big thing too.
Okay. And you divide your time between the two, the ARCAD and the aging. How many people are in the aging department?
We, we have two full-time people and then we have a half-time appointment for the director, the assistant director, and the administrative associate. So we have-
I think it's an excellent report you've made this morning. Appreciate the information.
Thank you very much.
Very thoroughly complete. Uh, one question. Uh, you mentioned on the, uh, home improvement when there is needed. Uh, as someone who owns their own home.
Yes. Yeah.
And, uh, what agencies or organizations do you work with to, to, uh, maybe it's, maybe it's home efficiencies on heating and so forth, or it's, it's, uh, like you said, a bathroom improvement? Uh, who are you working with with regard to that? Are you working with certain agencies or organizations?
So primarily, we do work with Interfaith Housing. Now, they try to utilize all, all the weapons that are out there. And so SCED gets, um, a certain amount of that too. Um, a lot, I'm gonna say a lot, but the majority of the little things that we do are, are, and we have a cap of $1,500 that we will put on an individual home. So obviously, there's not a lot that can be accomplished for that amount. Um, Interfaith Housing utilizes volunteers, so they don't have the labor expenses. So most of the time, it's just the cost of whatever it is, the materials. So Interfaith, um, is the kind of the lead that we would work, you know, with that. And if we need to help people with application processes and things like that, after they have done their evaluation of the situation, then we help people. But we don't have a particular, a group or anything, Commissioner Hurst, that we work with other than SCED and then, um, Interfaith Housing on home repair.
Interfaith Housing and SCED are the primary?
The people that we would go to, yeah.
Depending upon size of the project, I'm sure.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, because SCED doesn't get involved really that often with the things that we're doing. I, I can remember them doing one project in the time that I've been here.
All right. Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Other questions? Thank you, Barbara, for a complete explanation and interwritten.
Thank you.
Guess on here's County Administrator's Employment Agreement. Commissioner Sellers, you ask about that?
Well, yes, uh, I guess I could, uh, take the lead on this. Uh, uh, our administrator's contract runs from, uh, January 1st of each year to, uh, the following December 31st. The, uh, county commission met, uh, last week in executive session and reviewed, uh, the county administrator on his work this past year. Uh, how that was done was each commissioner did an individual review and then we consolidated those reviews and went over, uh, expectations and results with the county administrator. I think the, uh, commission as a whole, uh, thought that the, uh, performance of the administrator was above expectations for the, uh, 2020 year. And with that, we decided to, uh, give the administrator a one-year contract reverting back to January 1st, uh, this year with the employment, uh, uh, terms, uh, increasing by 4%. And some of that is in salary and some of that is in, uh, uh, retirement income, I believe. Is, is that the way that's stated? Uh, some of it's in, uh, needed expenses and education and mileage and so forth?
Well- It's under additional.
Additional compensation, uh, uh, be allocated to the administrator to either the vehicle allowance or deferred compensation with the total, uh, increase being 4%, as I understand it. So with that explanation, I would make the, uh, motion that the, uh, uh, commission approve, uh, the new contract with our county administrator, Randy Partington, acting January 1st, 2021 for the current year.
Second, they've moved and seconded to approve the county administrator's employment agreement. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes. We thank you for the job well done for the last year.
Thank you.
Next up is Salary Compensation Study. Renee or HR or Director?
Good morning, Commissioner Gess, Renee Harris, Human Resources Director. Okay, um, as you can see on the agenda item, um, we did go out for, um, proposals for a salary compensation study, job analysis, and performance management. We did receive the six proposals. Um, some of the information there, um, just kind of quickly goes over the charges. Um, we did in, we met with Randy and I met with, um, Maintenance Director Hernan DePue, Darren Campbell, the sheriff, undersheriff Sean McHale, Donna Patton, the county clerk, and Carla Nichols. We met with them because they tend to have larger departments, more employees. We like to get information from them on their thoughts on the proposals. In the end, um, we chose to, um, bring forward a recommendation to, for the Arnold Group. Um, it was a total cost for the, everything that we asked for, $56,118. A lot of the, um, Randy and I are both familiar with the Arnold Group, uh, what they do, their methodology. Finney Kelly implemented their system a little over a year ago, I believe, like a couple of years ago. And they have very high praise for that team and what they put in place there. Kind of solidified our decision with the Arnold Group. Phil himself is a, really, um, really good with all this information. Um, as I mentioned, there's some other documents that I sent. They have a company, they have employees, they work with Human Resources Issues daily. They do training. So, uh, that a lot, a lot of that made me comfortable myself with working with them as well in the future if we get that opportunity. One of the other things I liked, one of the things that we asked for was some cost, um, options. The Arnold Group actually provided us with some cost reduction options. So in that case, um, the job we asked for, separation of pricing from the comp, uh, classification, uh, study versus the job analysis and then the performance management system. As you can see from this, the comp, uh, classification survey is the $33,849. Job analysis for them to do all the work was $11,649. And the performance management piece would be $7,235. Their cost reduction options were to reduce for the job analysis and performance management by a significant amount, um, providing us with the guidance and tools to put that together. Um, that my staff would do the legwork on gathering all the data, um, uh, for that part of it and they would provide the rest. So they do significantly reduce those, on those two options. Our preference, of course, is to have them do everything. It's, it's very, um, I think it's good to have a third party, um, unbiased, kind of give a better percep-, uh, perception on our job descriptions, talking to the department heads, they'd interview employees. That's always a good tool to have and it's worked well in the past. However, those are options and we can go, um, go with the cost reduction options themselves. Do you have any questions on any of that page, the pricing? The Arnold Group was, I mentioned, um, the Archer Company did come in lower, but there were other factors. Um, it wasn't, um, a huge, huge difference. I guess it probably was, but, um, there were other weighting factors that really contributed to us choosing the Arnold Group even over the Archer Company. All of the companies have very good references. Um, the Arnold Group, like again, we're familiar with their methodology. We, um, are just more comfortable with the way they were going to proceed. And such, so that was just our option to, to go with them if we could. I know, um, some of the question is to whether we should do the salary and comp survey at all. I think I had sent some information earlier. It is becoming a question that department directors are coming to me a lot with. It is becoming a question that department directors are coming to me a lot with. A lot of positions have changed, they're wanting them reclassified. Positions are being opened and left open for weeks and months on end with, you might get one or two applications of those. They are not always qualified, so we've got employees working quite a bit of overtime to cover for those positions. We've got employees that are beginning to, again, leave for money, and it may not be much, sometimes it's quite a bit. You know, I think we've had the discussion, too, on, well, when Commissioner Bush was here, we were, he was talking about a concern with looking at the wages at a living wage was his, his comment, you know, did we provide a living wage? I actually went and this morning ran some data. We have a number of pay schedules. The beginning pay schedules start at ten dollars and thirty-seven cents for grades B through H that accounts for a hundred and eighteen people in the county. But that's thirty-four percent of our staff who are below fifteen dollars an hour. Thirteen percent of our staff are under twelve dollars and twelve cents an hour. So going forward, I don't know under the new administration where it's gonna go. I know I'm seeing information on a push towards moving minimum wage to fifteen dollars. In Kansas, we know that probably isn't gonna happen very quickly, but it is on the radar. And whether that's something we need to little inch a little bit more towards is raising up, looking at those bottom lines. You know, we've got bus drivers, tow drivers, manual laborers, administrative positions, a lot of those, like I said, thirty-four percent of our staff are under fifteen dollars an hour. So, and, and maybe some of them are accurate, maybe they're not. There are, I know Commissioner Friesen mentioned during the work study, software programs that can go out and look up data. I did look into the one that you mentioned, well, I didn't look into the one you mentioned because I couldn't get them to call me back. I was in touch multiple times, but couldn't get any information, so I can't speak to exactly what they do, but I do know that many of the online programs, they're very good at getting us external data. It may not be information that compares to our internal applicants and our internal pay equity. That's all information that pretty much needs a human person to ask those questions, dive into the skills and knowledge it takes to do the position. Do they have budgetary authority? How much oversight of staff do they have? There's a lot of questions that go into determining, comparing positions to positions with it. We have like an equivalent of eighteen little departments working for Reno County, and just for example, an administrative associate in one county and one department does completely different work than, than another department. So, you know, on that note, like I went to salary dot com, talking about it's good at external data. Salary dot com, I put in administrative associate, too, in Hutchinson, high school education only, less than a year experience, and they're coming up with starting salaries, thirty-six thousand, five fifty. Reno County says twenty-eight, five ninety. I don't believe that that starting salary is accurate or where we should be, but it's just a point of saying that, that is a whole different set of data, and I don't know if that's a great place for us to rely on completely for doing our salary survey.
Renee, I have a question. We, we always put on the actual cash salary.
I'm sorry, the cat, what?
We always say on your data here, you always put on the cash salary.
Yeah, cash, okay.
There is a huge amount of benefit dollars per hour also, that somehow, I think, needs to be, in my opinion, needs to be noted, the fact that maybe those who are making fifteen or eighteen an hour may not be getting anywhere near the benefit value that maybe a county employee does with regards to insurance, I'm talking specifically. So I, I just, sometimes we look at the actual cash money we have, which we need to look at, 'cause that's what pays the bills.
Right.
But it's that secondary benefits that are worth something if you have to come up with the cash to pay those. So I, I really, I have a hard trouble just saying, this is what I'm getting, because I'm getting some other things in there that are worth quite a bit of dollars per hour. And, and so I, I just, I know that may be hard to put into it, but I think it's really worth.
Yeah, absolutely. In both of our previous surveys, that they went out and they also reviewed benefits information, comparable benefits information, and put that into some data that we could relate to employees, but this is, yes, this is the wage that might be in the market, however, you're also getting this much benefit with, with your benefits and health insurance. That's absolutely part of what we need to communicate. And I agree, it's, that's huge, and it's an important piece for employees to realize, and we have a lot of employees that probably don't realize that, many, many do, and they're very appreciative of it. You know, it's getting more often, and it's just, it's interesting, because how long I were just talking, it was so odd that just in the last few months, and I don't even know what drives it exactly, but we've got employees coming in and, and, you know, the, the requirement to get health insurance on the marketplace and or group is not there anymore. There's no fine to do that, even when there was a fine, people weren't doing it anyway. But people are coming in, and we have one this week, not enrolled in health insurance. I can't pay it, I can't, I've got to have the money to pay my bills, and that's a sad thing. You know, you try to talk to them, it's like, wow, do you have any idea how much you're gonna put out if you, you know, are seriously ill? And it doesn't matter, I can't, I can't afford it. So, you know, in that case, you can communicate that, but with some people, it's gonna, it doesn't matter, I've got to make the right amount of salary. So now, you know, we talked about our health insurance, and we do, we have an excellent plan. It is, you know, we mentioned that earlier, that way back in the day, the county probably did, and most government entities probably had what we considered a very rich plan. Our deductibles and out-of-pay, co-pays and things like that were much lower, probably than the private industry, but I don't think that's as much anymore, at least the last time we'd gone out to survey comparable private in our counties. We've got pretty high deductibles that employees have to make, and between both plans, the first three thousand dollars basically comes out of the employee's pocket. So for someone with an upper level job, that isn't nearly as hard, but someone making eleven dollars an hour, ten fifty, that's pretty tough to make, so, plus your premiums, that's just your out-of-pocket, plus your doctor's office co-pays and prescription co-pays that still continue. So that plus the premium, although, yes, insurance is wonderful, you have to have it, it does still cost the employee money, too, and they look at that honestly. So it's hard sometimes to get them to understand how important they are to have. They just look at, well, it takes another two hundred dollars a month out of my check, and I have to have that to pay my electricity, electricity and groceries, so. I'm certainly not saying that we need to be the leading payer of salaries in the county at all. You know, our thought has always been the last few years, that at least we can tell the employees, we've made an effort to try to make sure we're on board. If we are, we are, that's just the way it is. If we're not, what can we do to look at options to change the salaries?
Renee, what was the year of our last salary?
Two thousand fifteen.
So five years. With five or six, six years?
We did it in fifteen, implemented it in sixteen.
So five.
Five years, yeah. Before that was two thousand eight.
You have a nice turnaround. My second question was, I see that this group has an option for thirty-three hundred and forty-five dollars for an annual upgrade and lots of other things to go with that.
Yeah, and.
It seems to me that how often, as long as we pay an annual fee of thirty-three hundred and forty-five, or whatever it might be, that that's, that's six times, six years ago, that'd be six times that, which is about nineteen, twenty thousand dollars versus we're paying fifty-some thousand dollars if we select this group.
Right.
And it seems to me it would be our advantage to look at, and I don't know how long that annual fee would be, but as long as it's somewhere around that, it would appear to me to be more economical to be upgraded and, and have all of those, have that option. It's a lot more economical than not doing it, and then six years or seven years or five years from now, coming back and, and paying another larger fee.
Yes.
Is that, is that?
Yes.
How does that work?
Well.
Is that a, is that a good option?
It is. Randy and I discussed that, and it is, and knowing them and how consultive, I should say, that they are, they really want to work with employees to keep it up to get, that does not, from what I understand, it doesn't include them going out every year doing a mass salary and comp survey like this, but it does include us looking at, they'll be able to look at positions. So if there's positions that come up, and we're beginning to wonder, how are they doing in the market now, they will review those with us. They will, their system allows us to more unbiasedly decide where a position falls in, a new position, or the duties in a position change, to be able to better decide where that falls in the comp survey, rather than just relying on something else.
I guess I would be really interested in finding out what all that would include.
Yeah.
And, and how it would, could benefit us from a financial cost standpoint.
Yeah, even if, yeah, that's, that's one of the areas I was real, and you just, you take it on as long as you want, there isn't a contract, it's just year to year. So if we did it, if we're able to do even the comp and comp survey and stuff, and we did that, we find out it's not as beneficial as we thought, we just stop paying it, we don't, we don't, we're not contracted for a length of time, just a year to year. But again, the, the response there from other places, it's a really, it's been a really good option for them. I think this is something new that they've started.
I mean, I'd just like to look at, at that, to see if it would be advantageous, visit with Randy and you, and see if it would be advantageous to, to do that, and what your thoughts are. Okay? I think it has to be done right today, but, but I sure think it's.
Yeah, that's what our thought was, is it could really help us not have to go through this, not feel like we have to go through this as often. You know, they, the, the recommendation from vendors and stuff like this is, you know, five to seven years, you should go out and verify all this stuff. With this option, we feel that that does, won't have to be done, it'll just quickly.
Sorry to interrupt, but the thought we had in the committee, when we talked about this, what we liked about the Arnold Group is exactly that. They do a lot of the base work to begin with, give us the tools, the spreadsheets, the information to keep it up, so we can stay competitive, so that five, six years, we're not back at ground zero. We're, we can continue this on our own with less dependence on a comp study in the future.
Okay. I would agree. I'm struggling a little bit with the price, and I think some of it has to do with kind of a backed-up workload associated with, you know, adjusting and reviewing the, the particular job descriptions and, and salary pay in a, in a more ongoing basis, and so I would encourage staff to make sure that in the future, they keep up with things, and I, I mean, I, I just know from, you know, private business experience, I don't, I don't know if this is common, but we don't kind of do a five-year look, we just are constantly looking at the competitive landscape, and, and that's where the tool that we used, I brought up, was, you know, they're typically, when a job goes out, they're typically looking in real time on what the, what the, what the, what the market is, and the market can change quite a bit in five years, and, and so I realize there might be a little more, a little bit of, you know, a cookie cutter approach to the different positions, and, and so, but I'm curious on what the other commissioners think. I'm, I'm okay, I just, I mean, this, this amounts, you know, almost breaching a full, you know, an FTE level, and, and with your comment that we're doing a lot of the legwork, I was, I was just hoping it would be a little less, but based on the fact that you got so many different proposals, and they were, they were in the range of, of this amount, and the fact that the committee met, and this is their recommendation, I, I think I can go along with it, but I, I just, I just don't want the future commission to be in this position again. I think that the comment of the chairman of investing a little each year would, would be a better approach. But maybe this is normal, is this normal, Randy, just every five years?
I think most governments do it every few years, five, six years.
Okay.
Because I think a lot of times municipal government gets behind, depending on the budget and the year, they don't want to increase, and then after five or six years, they realize they're, they forgot a few years, so now, are we even in the market anymore? And I think it is, would be important to try to prevent that for the future.
Yeah, I don't think that's fair to the employees we have, or, or the prospective employees, and I would, I would encourage you, Renee, to do this in more real time in the future, and I believe you, Randy, it's probably what government does, but it doesn't necessarily mean it's the right approach either, so.
Yeah, I, I like your approach, Commissioner Friesen, that, you know, private industry, many times, we need to implement what private industry does if they have a more efficient way of doing things. And so that's where I kind of like that idea of keeping, why, why do this big amount every five or six years if we can do it annually and kind of keep up to date on things, and then the rest of it done in-house, I think makes sense to me.
Yeah, this is the first time we've seen that option come through for a vendor, it's pretty much been take it or leave it, you know, so I, I really appreciated these options that they gave us, so we'll see going forward.
And if it doesn't work, we don't have, we can quit.
Correct, yeah, and we can look at something else, but, and I'm, and I'm off for looking at another system, too, to do that as well, so just haven't found anything yet.
Maybe one thing we could ask is whether some of the tools that the Arnold Group is going to use, if that's who we choose, could be made available to us, and so we can do some of that and learn a little bit with them on what they're doing to develop this stuff for them.
What they, they are, yeah, that's my interest, is that when they, they leave all those tools that they're using and put this on place with us, so that was the idea, is for us to be able to.
Some of this market data, like?
Yeah, the market data they still would go out and get, and we would, and we could go out and do that, too, but.
I, I think that's the one point I'm kind of going back to, is I think if we can, if there's a way for us to obtain some market data, if we don't have to spend too much just to, if there's a question mid-year between contracts, if we can either through our, if we contract with them on, on a yearly basis through them, they would be able to provide us with real-time position, salary pricing.
Correct.
Market-based pricing, that would be good.
Yeah.
I also wanted to reiterate the chairman's comment about making sure both employees and prospective employees understand the value of the position, and I think that's an area, you know, you could get some assistance from, from Lori Moody with, with her marketing and communications help. I know internally, for our company, you know, it's a big point for us, is we market to our employees what their full value is, and I'd be happy to share you kind of our marketing piece of what.
Sure.
We show as like total value and compensation, 'cause chairman's right, salary is just a piece, there's a whole bunch of other benefits that people always forget about, and there's a lot of value there, so, thanks.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
I agree with most of the thoughts by the other two commissioners, and I would make the motion that we accept the Arnold Group proposal for fifty-six thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars, and I would further make the motion that the Personnel Department, the HR Department, bring back to us more information on the ongoing contract that's been discussed today.
Okay.
For our decision in the future. For our decision in the future.
I'd second that.
Okay. Been moved and seconded to approve the contract with the Arnold Group and to bring back information on the annual upgrade. Is that correct?
Is that, is that to consider whether we do that part or not? Is that what that's for, I'm understanding? Because that was the additional three, three thousand three hundred and eighty-five, that's not in the fifty-six one eighteen.
Correct.
Okay, make sure I understood that.
Any further discussion? Not, roll call please.
Commissioner Freezon?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes. Thank you, Renee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda item is a second review of the commission meeting Randy, do you want to?
I can also have it on the screen here. Last week, you guys discussed the policy for commission meetings and had a few areas to make changes to, so, and that I believe included areas in the meeting agenda about the first sentence, about being prepared by the county administrator's office, and, and Joe and I, when we were talking, what I looked at, the resolution that created the administrator position, and it says the administrator's, one of the responsibilities, and it uses the word, create an agenda in conjunction with the commission. That's, that's where that term came from, so it would match a previously adopted resolution. I did, took out chairman in some areas and just put chair, that way it was just broad, just mention the chair. Then in the public comment, I think that was where most of the discussion or changes were, and there were two versions that went out in the past couple of weeks. The first one had the phrase, well, I guess on public comment, I'll go to this page, "The Board of County Commissioners has chosen to allow for public comment from Reno County citizens under certain circumstances." That didn't change. Public comment will be limited to five minutes. And then the original version, revised version, had the five-minute rule maybe waived for someone who has specialized information and was requested to be at the meeting by a commission member. After looking at that and some discussion, I deleted that one. That sentence had added it and then deleted it because it'll, in the copy you have, it doesn't show up there. That was the highlight in yellow that you saw earlier this morning. The commission has the right during the meeting to add, revise the agenda anyways, and so if we had someone with specialized knowledge, whether the, a chair asked for or staff, it could just be added during the meeting, unless you guys want me to put it back in. That's why you had requested it last week, I put it in, but then in looking at the terminal or the, the way it sounded, it opened it up to where any person could ask for a specialized member, but if that's going to go through the process, the chair would have the right to add it to the agenda.
Go ahead.
I saw, so I saw the other version, and I did, I did think it, it had some complicating factors associated with it, and I agree in, in that sense. I think on the other side, the intent that I was looking for was to make it clear that, and I think the problem with the way it was written, and maybe why I was taken out, was I, I think it was, it was written in a way that said, you know, commissioner can ask somebody to come up during the public comment period, and then they get more than five minutes. I don't think that was the intent. I think the intent was to make it clear the difference between public comment and, and an opportunity for commissioners to ask somebody to speak on an item on the agenda and come up, and, you know, I, I think, I think, I was just looking for some clarity, because I think there was some confusion from some commissioner comments last year, and perhaps with the public on, you know, when is the appropriate time for people to speak more than five minutes? And to me, it's during an agenda item where the commission has consented for it, and so I was just perhaps hoping that that could be clarified somewhere. I don't know what the other commissioners think, but to me, I was just trying to address the, the confusion of, you know, why, why we may need people to talk more than five minutes.
And I think that could be addressed during the revision of the agenda that's in there at the beginning-
Okay.
To where a commissioner or the chair could say, could state, there's an item on the agenda or a discussion I would like to have, and I have a specialist to come talk.
Okay, I, I think I, I agree with Commissioner Freezon, but, and so I, I believe that we should delete that statement, but if, if the reason we're doing this is allowing for the agenda to be changed, to provide a consultant or somebody to come and speak before us, it, I wonder, and I'm just throwing this out, and I didn't realize this until Commissioner Freezon was speaking, but it seems like to me that we ought to change the order of the agenda and move determined additions and revisions to before public comment. Does that make sense to any, because what, what we're agreeing to is that we might have somebody that's a specialist in an area that the commission or the chair or by group action would like to have speak at the meeting, and I think they're going to be allowed to speak at the meeting in excess of that five minutes by moving that revisions to the agenda before public comment.
Well, you know, I hear what you're saying, Commissioner Sellers, I, I think there is some value in kind of having a demarcation between, you know, the public comment and then our, our business at hand, and I, I think if, what, what I'm trying to figure out is how we make it known to the, the commission almost that, hey, if you want somebody to come and speak, if one of us wants somebody to come and speak, the appropriate process for that is to do it in the additions and revisions section and not ask them to come to public comment, and, and then request them to speak more than five minutes. Like, I, I think we're saying the same thing, and, and I, I don't have a big issue with moving the item, but I like the fact that public comment is, you know, items not on the agenda, it's things people are just coming for. I think also we need to encourage, maybe this is another point of, it's, it's always helpful for people to communicate their position ahead of time, and it's, it's helpful to say you're going to come speak in the public comment period and let the commission know, because it, it might be something that may be better handled on an agenda item and, and given more thought, but when you come and, and speak on, in, in a public comment, it's, it's kind of, you say your, your piece, and then, and then you go, and it's, it's really, I like the fact that it's kind of separated from the agenda.
I think we have a mechanism in the meeting procedures here that will allow, this public comment is for items not on the agenda, and we have a mechanism here that if they have a comment regarding the agenda, correct me if I'm wrong, that they can make application on a Wednesday before the meeting and stay, and do their qualifications, do their reasoning for it, and, and that, that might be, to me, that, that's, that's one way for someone who has something that reflects the agenda item, to be able to come in and speak, and leave the public comment right as a public not on the agenda items, but then you can, if they have made that application to speak on an agenda item, that would be an addition or revision to the agenda, would it not? Or at that time that that project comes up, that they have the qualifications and have been approved to speak on that agenda item, and we still have the opportunity to say, okay, you have five minutes to talk about this, or in a case of a, of an expert that has some things that we really need to hear, that we don't have any trouble in extending that, because we know ahead of time what that subject property is that he's going to talk about.
Yeah.
That's, to me, that's the separation.
We're, we are kind of beating this thing to death, but I, I think it's because we're so, we, I think we're putting a high importance on the fact that, you know, the public is allowed to speak, we just need to do it in an organized manner, and I think maybe to take your, your comments a step further, both, both of you, is, you know, maybe we need, maybe the chair needs to, if, if, if that person identifies, if the chair identifies that there's a need for public comment for an item on the agenda, that you open up public comment for that item on the agenda, close it, and then others that we want to speak can, can speak at the pleasure of, of, of the chair, and then we don't have, the thing I'm, I'm worried about is, you know, you know, you want to be equal for everybody, but I think the differentiator is whether it's, it's a general public comment or whether it's, it's, it's needed specifically requested by the commission.
And I think the public comment section here is really for items not on the agenda. This is really for any citizen just to come vent or let you know their feelings about an issue that's not on the agenda.
But how, how do you address when the, like, wind or, you know, COVID, these are items on the agenda, how do you address public, I mean, the public wants to comment on those?
I think that's, and I could put some things in here also about add in, you know, that all the commissioners have emails, you can take messages, if they want to reach out to you outside the meeting to let you know their positions, you guys are available, and they can get that information to you instead of coming in here and reading something or talking about an item that is on the agenda. Anytime there's an item on the agenda, if it's not a public hearing, there's no requirement that the county commission allows them to speak on that issue. That's completely up to you guys, but then it does open that up. If you do it for one, why aren't you doing it for another issue? So, you could also have in here public comment, and I, and Joe may mention this when he talks about another topic, if, you know, there's no requirement to have public comment. It kind of states that in that first sentence, has chosen to allow under certain circumstances. Well, that doesn't guarantee there's always going to be allowed public comment.
I, I think also that if, if, if we would adopt something like this and go to the two meetings a month with, with those four exceptions, that the agenda needs to be put out, the proposed agenda at least, needs to be put out ahead of time enough to where they can, if they have something to say, they can respond by the Wednesday before. See? Because if it comes out on a Thursday, it's too late before the meeting. So there's some scheduling then there to where-
Are, are we, are we going down the road of we would not accept public comment on, on an item done on the agenda?
I would hope not.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify.
Well, just to clarify from this, you guys, anytime there's an agenda item doesn't, that's really up to the chair, because, you know, depends on the item, but you don't really open up every discussion to the public for discussion.
Well, yeah, I think that's, that's an important point to make, and, and the more we talk about this, the more I think it would be helpful to provide the public with more detail as to, you know, how you can make your comments more effective, you know, when is the appropriate time and why? And I agree, there needs to be an explanation that some people think that this is a conversation with the public, and generally it's not unless it's a public hearing, right? This is a commission meeting, and, you know, it's, it's open to the public for observation, but I, I still think the question is, when do you have public comment for items on the agenda?
I think we could try to be too rigid in this, myself, that everything, that many items that come up in front of us may or may not, we may or may not, as a commission, want to have specific comments on what the topic it is, but yet if, if a person has an interest in it, then I don't know that, and I think we could continue this, I don't know that we have ever let somebody not comment. And so I think we can be too rigid in trying to put rules and regs out there on this particular thing, that we take it as we go.
And there's a couple paragraphs above public comment. It does say, "Discussion by those in attendance regarding an agenda item is at the discretion of the board chair." That's, that's where the, usually on comments about agenda items, as Commissioner Hurst, Chairman Hurst mentioned, if they go out Thursday, there's an agenda, the public can view that, and if they have an issue with an item, they can then email, call, they can contact commissioners, or they can come to the meeting and listen in on what's discussed. But usually that doesn't then open it up for, I guess, debate on an agenda item usually. Now, there may be certain items that the chair or the commission wants to ask input, but not on normal routine items. For example, an item that was on today, the comp study, if there were citizens that came in and wanted to talk about that, even though staff had done their work, they'd be up to the chair, I guess, to say, does the public have any comment on this? But that's not really routine on administrative details for commission decisions, but.
I, I think we're talking about two different things, public comment on agenda items, and this sentence here on, under public comment is in regarding to the, the public comment on non-agenda items, and so I think at this point, we ought to just delete that sentence, and then we can have further discussions in the future of exactly what type of comment and when the county is going to give citizens on agenda items. But I'd like to get this document adopted today, and so by doing that, I'd like to delete that sentence about the five-minute rule maybe waived.
And so on the new version I handed you, that's not in there anymore?
Yeah.
So it's on the screen, I believe, but it's not-
I've got, I've got three different versions in front of me.
On the screen, I think it, it does say the five-minute rule may be waived or something, but that sentence is the hard copy that I handed you this morning, took that out.
So my motion is to approve the document in front of us today, but deleting the, the sentence, the five-minute rule may be waived for- Someone who has specialized information- Someone who has specialized information- Was requested to be at the meeting by a commission member.
I'd second that for discussion, for sure.
Been moved and seconded to approve the, uh, meeting, get it right here, meeting policy, commissioner's policy on commission meetings with the deletion of the third sentence in public comment, as, as read earlier by Commissioner Sellers. Any more discussion?
Yeah, just maybe two, two items. One is if Mr. Chairman, you'd allow, I think maybe we should ask whether Joe has any comment- One is, if Mr. Chairman, you'd allow, I think maybe we should ask whether Joe has any comments on this, and, and then along with that, maybe, you know, I could, I could go along with this. I don't think it's, it's complete, um, and I agree with Commissioner Sellers, that, you know, maybe we could ask staff, there's really no rush, but if, if staff, especially Joe and Randy, could take some of the feedback associated with, you know, public comment, and, and maybe develop some guidance for how the public can best assist, uh, in, in delivering their comments and so forth, but.
Okay. All right. Joe, do you want to make any comments?
Joe Sullivan, County Counselor, and, uh, Commissioner Freezin, this would be along the lines of what you mentioned earlier, um, and that is that, um, there are rare circumstances, exceptional or extraordinary situations come before you. Uh, they don't come very often, as I said, in which considerable public interest is involved, and you can anticipate potentially a considerable number of people who will appear and wish to be heard, and under your practices up to this point, and under the policy you're talking about, uh, you're open to, uh, public, uh, comment. Uh, I'm particularly thinking about the matter of the zoning regulations, new zoning regulations that have been proposed by the Planning Commission, which will be coming before you shortly, even as early as your next meeting in, in February the 7th. I would point out to you that, um, the, the process of coming up with these zoning regulations was initiated by the County Commission almost two years ago in anticipation of a conditional use permit application by, uh, NEXTARA for a commercial wind energy, a commer, uh, uh, system. The statutory process for that was that the Planning Commission has conducted an extensive process on this, uh, leading up to the discussion you're going to have, and that involved, uh, two or three months in which the public was invited to submit information and its thoughts and its proposals on this subject, and then that was followed by a public hearing, which is required by law, in which the public is, is given notice and provided an opportunity to be heard. And as you know, that, uh, the Planning Commission went to extraordinary effort to provide a facility for which that could be done, and, and that was done at the 4H Encament Building at the State Fair. There was a, uh, it was a video, it was broadcast on, uh, on, on the internet system. Uh, the discussion went on for four hours. Everybody who appeared had an opportunity to be heard, uh, and, and that closed the public meeting. Subsequent to that, the Planning Commission had a number of meetings when it received the draft, first draft proposal, uh, from county planning staff with respect to these, uh, regulations concerning wind energy production, and, um, at least two or three months of, well, meetings followed in which the Planning Commission, uh, reviewed the draft with staff, came up with revisions, and ultimately, uh, voted to, uh, send, uh, before you what is now recommended. So, I think that, uh, the public hearing process, it has provided extensive time for the public to have input. Uh, those who weren't there to speak, at least who wanted to know what took place, um, had an opportunity to review that online. I know that members of this board were either present in person or reviewed that hearing and process. So, um, I think that, uh, this is in a context of what you are discussing. You have, your practice has been open to public comment, and I think you can anticipate that, um, uh, when this comes before you, unless, unless you say otherwise, I think there can be a considerable number of people from past experience on this particular subject who would appear and expect to be heard unless you decide that you wish in some way to provide some structure or limitation to that. And that's what I'm here today for, for, to urge you to consider, whatever, whatever it is you do. Um, again, uh, what you are undertaking is, is not a public hearing. Uh, you, you have to consider these, uh, recommendations and public meeting under the Open Meetings Act, uh, but, uh, if you feel like you've, you have enough information and the process has been thorough up to this point, uh, you could easily find that there's no necessity for further public comment. However, should you decide that public comment is appropriate under some circumstances, I would urge you to clarify and determine that today, uh, rather than, uh, at the time when you undertake this before you and all those people potentially could be here. Uh, and if you choose to allow, uh, public comment then, what will be the structure that, that will be imposed, and, uh, uh, whether it be the length of time that you will hear a comment, the length from individuals, or the total length of time that you would hear people? I think it's just fair, uh, to put all these people who have a great interest in this subject to know, um, what's, what's going to take place and, and what you anticipate doing on that day. So, that would be my, my recommendation to you.
Okay. I, Joe, I appreciate your remarks, and I agree with, uh, your remarks, but I think you're talking about something somewhat different than my motion that I just made.
And, and I, I take some of the blame for that. I think I unintentionally, you know, baited Joe into, into, you know, giving some, he, he's essentially given an example of what we're trying to talk about in the motions, but I agree, there's a motion on the table, and if, if we want to, we can.
And also, I believe, uh, at the start of the meeting on revisions, that item J has to do with that.
Yeah, I, I think that was kind of my fault for, they, they're, they're kind of wanting the same, but we do have a motion, and we, I'd like to talk about item J, but.
I, I think we can do that, and, and item J, I believe. So, uh, if there's any more discussion with regarding the motion, and the motion again is to approve the County Commission Policy on Commission Meetings with the deletion of the third sentence, as was read by Commissioner Sellers. Do you want me to reread that? I think we all understand that.
No, I.
So, I would, uh, there's no further discussion?
Um, Commissioner Sellers, would you be willing to amend that just to include a, um, uh, instruction to staff to, to continue to work on the public comment?
Certainly.
Okay. Thank you.
Because I, I agree with you that I think better instructions on how to communicate to the commission to the public can be beneficial both ways.
Yeah.
So, I agree with your, uh, your thought process.
I don't think, I think we, everyone understands that. I don't think it, that you feel it really needs to be part of that motion.
Well, I just, I just wanted it to be.
I think we can ask that to be done.
I wanted it to be clear to the staff. If it's clear, then I'm okay either way.
Okay. I think it's understood.
Okay.
So, in, in my opinion, that probably doesn't have to be part of that, that motion, if that's all right with, with.
I'm not, I'm not trying to be argumentative, but I agreed to include his part to my motion, and he agreed to the second, so can it be left in there?
You want to be real critical about Robert Trill's order.
No, you're, you're the one that.
I think, I think Commissioner Sellers has it right on, on the technicality here. And it's.
A call for the question.
Okay.
I'd second that.
Did you reread the, the motion?
I can reread part of it. You wanted to adopt it as it was, taking out the five-minute policy rule, and then you amended it to have the instruction for the staff to continue to work on, on the document.
Yeah, I, I think it was a friendly amendment. I don't, you know, if we really want to be technical, we'd have to vote on that. We also have a call, and I seconded the call, so we need to vote on that.
All righty. Yep, I understand. Roll call, please.
Okay. Ms. Freezin?
Yes.
Ms. Sellers?
Yes.
Ms. Hurs?
Yes. Okay.
Did we vote on the call for the question, right? Don't we have to vote on that?
Yes.
Okay, so now we're voting on.
We're voting on the motion as amended.
Okay.
All right. So, roll call?
Freezin?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes.
Ms. Hurs?
Yes. Thank you, Daniel.
Thank you.
We get us all straight here, won't we?
Well, I think.
You know, before we start on the last three items, why, could we take about a four or five-minute break to stand up? Okay. Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order. Item H is the request by Commissioner Sellers, uh, to, uh, instead of being a full representative as his pro position, present position is on the Board of Hutch Rec, uh, to be designated as ex officio. Is that correct?
Yeah, let me, uh, I've been on the, uh, REC Commission Board for six years and enjoyed being on that board. Uh, however, uh, we provide a, a small amount of funding to HRC through county funds, and I don't believe it's appropriate for, uh, a commissioner that's providing funds to a board to be on that board. So, uh, what the REC Commission has done is created a position as ex officio officer, one from the City of Hutchinson and one from the Reno County, to be ex officio, non-voting members on their board. And if the rest of the commission so, uh, approved, I'd like to be the ex officio member, uh, representing Reno County Commission to the Hutchinson Recreation Commission Board.
Does that require a motion?
Let's do it, let's do it as a motion.
I would so move.
Okay. I will second that. Uh, any more discussion? All in favor? Y'all in favor, say aye. All in favor, answer the roll call, okay?
Ms. Freezin?
Yes.
Ms. Sellers?
Epstein.
Ms. Hurs?
Yes. All right. Thank you for consideration. That was good. Uh, Daniel, the item I, I believe, was a request from you, uh, or discuss, to discuss a position on the, as an ex officio member of the Startup Hutch Board. Is that correct?
That, that's right, Mr. Chairman, and similar to Commissioner Sellers' points, I, current, or I was, um, a, um, a member of Startup Hutch's, um, Board of Directors and, and chairman of that board, and similarly feel that it's not appropriate to be in that position, given the county is, is a direct funder of, of that board. That board does afford, um, this commission an ex officio position, and I think with, uh, I, uh, right now, Commissioner Sellers is, is, is the appointed person, and with his consent, would, would, um, like to take up that role, um, and would seek, seek, um, approval of the commission to that effect.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd make the motion that, uh, uh, my position on as the ex officio member of the Startup Hutch Board may be transferred to Daniel Freezin at this time.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Freezin?
Epstein.
Ms. Sellers?
Yes.
Ms. Hurs?
Yes. Okay. Daniel, be the ex officio member. Now, the item J, that, uh, I think Joe, uh, commented with regard to, and if I understood I wrote this right, wrote this down correctly, was Commissioner Freezin wanted some, uh, information discussion on the public comment, uh, with regard to the, uh, WEX regulations. Is that pretty well correct?
Yeah, and, and Joe did a good job teeing it up, um, and it was just, um, based on, on some, some back and forth we had on just, you know, where we're headed with, with the particular, um, wind regulation. And if you remember from last Thursday, there was, there was some confusion on my, my part as to, uh, what the process looked like, and I, I think if I understand it now, um, it's similar to, to, uh, all recommendations that come from, from, from the Planning Commission. It comes to this board, and we can, um, approve, deny, or, or amend. Um, and, and so I think that's clear. I think the, the question becomes for us a, a few things, and I know it's not on, on the agenda for, um, full comment on, on the regulations, but I expect that to happen soon, and, you know, um, we'll, we'll need to make a determination whether, what we're going to do and whether we're going to take further public input. Um, I, I think, I assume like me, you have received numerous public comments already via, uh, in writing, and, and, and so I appreciate those, and, and I guess the question before us is, do we take another public comment and when?
Well, just throw out my thoughts on the subject. Uh, uh, I've either been in person or watched all the tapes of both public meetings, the one on the NEXTARA application, and then the one at the Planning Commission. Uh, those tapes are available for, uh, Commissioner Freezin. If he hasn't seen them and desires to see them, then he can see them, and so I, I think there's, uh, been a lot of public comment. Uh, he is correct that we receive public comment on wind regulation daily via email from citizens, uh, and rightfully, they should be able to do that and can continue to do that. I would think that, uh, the process of, uh, agreeing to a, a new, uh, wind regulation is going to be a, uh, several meeting situation, and I would suggest that before the, the commission takes a final vote on any wind regulation, that we allow both pro and con public comment, uh, at the appropriate time, uh, for each side not to exceed thirty minutes, with each speaker to be five minutes. And that's just a, an idea. Uh, I think that each side, uh, I think there's people that would want to vote for, or would want to speak both ways from the public on this, but I think, uh, six speakers from each side would be adequate to represent those two sides, and, uh, so that, that's just an idea that I might have.
I, uh, I agree that with, with just about everything that I think I heard you say, and that I think we should reserve some time so that people, the public, uh, can present. I think there should be some limitations, uh, whether that's time-wise or, or how we decide that. Uh, I think some limitations, and I'm not so sure that, that I wouldn't drop it down to three minutes, uh, quite frankly, to, to offer, say, thirty or forty-five minutes or, or. The other question is, I, I agree with you, that there'd be the ability for both, uh, people who are, who want different regulations than what's been presented to us, uh, as well as those who are satisfied with those regulations. as well as those who are satisfied with those regulations as presented to us, to present their feelings in it verbally. I know we've gotten emails and so forth, but I think the opportunity to come before us publicly now. Now, the question is, is to me, and we take this up probably on February, but I don't know why we couldn't talk about it now, is, do we do this in the commission setting? Or do we have another work-study session that allows the public to come in and give comments while we? Or do we take commission time in one meeting and then, knowing we won't get through with this, do we limit the amount of time in a commission meeting that we talk about this, the regulations? I guess that's where I'm at, is enter into some discussion with regard to that.
Well, yeah, I think we're coming to consensus here. I'm also in agreement that one more public comment period is valid. I think just formulating in my head, I kind of feel like what the chairman said, I agree. We probably need a dedicated session. And for me, maybe it's two. I think we need to get further into where we are as a commission on the particulars. And once we get, have that discussion, because I know Commissioner Sellers especially wasn't ready to fully, you know, discuss some of the points we were at the last meeting, and to really have that conversation first, so the public can kind of hear where our positions are in general, and then allow them, after that discussion, to make their final presentation, might be appropriate. I really like Commissioner Sellers' point of, in general, seeing if there's some consensus amongst the two positions. Certainly, there's, you know, the differences in opinion, but to the extent we can ask groups to consolidate their position into a single position. In fact, if, I don't know how you would do it, but, you know, if you could give some group that has, as an example, if you had people sign up by a deadline, you know, you had this many people and this many people, and eighty percent of that one side said, "Well, we'll speak as one", you could give them eighty percent of the time and let them, you know, give a little more detailed public response. Because I'm thinking on one side, there's a fairly uniformed position, and if we're given thirty minutes, we allow that, but maybe that's too complicated. But I like the idea of just saying there's an hour worth of public comment left, and there's thirty minutes on each side. Give us your best positions, and that's it. Because I agree, we'll go at this forever if we don't put some restrictions in there.
So, you would rather, if I'm hearing you right, you would rather have us a study session by ourselves without public comment during that period of time, rather than have public comment at a work-study session?
I think we need to have one additional study session where we get into the details as a commission, so the public can observe where we're headed, and then take kind of final comments, closing arguments, if you will, and then...
Before we do the final change, if there's any changes we want to make, we can do those final changes after the comment period?
Sure, I think so.
Directly to the commission, is that...
Absolutely, that would be my thought.
I could go with that. So, I think we're making headway here. If this document's going to be brought to us our first session in February, why don't we accept the document from the Planning Commission, schedule one more session of the commission to have a study session on the document after that point? And then, in the meantime, better refine the process of when we're ready to adopt, given the public the right to speak on the issue for a limited amount of time, if appropriate.
You mentioned one word that I didn't quite follow, accept it, accept the...
Well...
We're not ready to accept the regulations yet. We're ready to accept that for study.
Yes, yeah, that's all I meant.
Accept the draft.
That in the first meeting in February, the commission is actually accepting the document from the Planning Commission, is all it is.
In other words, we're receiving a draft for review.
For our, for the commission's final decisions.
And...
And if we see we don't make progress, we could put it off till the second meeting in February. Does that make sense? Hopefully, we can come up with something, but I would prefer, if we're going to have this meeting, that it not be on a Saturday, myself. You have other obligations, I realize, that I can try to schedule around. So essentially, we're talking about getting together for a work-study session with the commission only, is that right?
Yeah, a public commission meeting.
Open meetings?
Yep.
The public is invited and...
To observe.
And then, and then, after our discussions, then it will be brought before the commission with a time period for some public comment. Are we in error anywhere, Joe?
Well, no, I'm a little confused, it's probably my issue. So, if you mean for further discussions on the details of the proposal, presumably, you're attempting to come up with a consensus of either accepting it as is or identifying changes that you want. If you identify changes, I think you're probably going to want another document Mr. Friesen referred to as a red line document from staff outlining that. And of course, after, if you reach such a consensus, staff would have to come back at your next meeting with that to ensure that what's presented is what you reached a consensus. I don't know how far you want this to go before then you take public comment. You know what I'm saying? You just can't have a meeting, given the number of subjects that, number of potential changes, some small and others not so small, you certainly want those set out in writing somewhere as to what changes you're making so that people understand that. And I would say that's in a, maybe a red line document where you...
A consensus document to bring before.
Yeah, how about we, we have this study session, staff will redline, bring it to our next regular meeting. And at that regular meeting, we can concur that that's what we agreed, or that's what we drafted, and then set the final public comment meeting after that time.
Yes, I recall, I don't think that staff had a really firm idea of issues that consensus was reached on. I mean, I recall hearing a number of points of view stated and so forth, but to the extent that...
No, it's, yeah, you're right.
You're right.
Without really getting down to resolving some of those.
So, in essence, we could have this consensus meeting, if we can come up with a consensus. Then we give that to be written up by the planning department, my own tune so far. And then they bring that to us, hopefully, at the first February meeting.
Yeah, just at the next, our next commission meeting.
My only response to that is, I think that's too quickly.
And what you're saying, it would come back, not with the idea that you would adopt it or approve it formally, but that then you would proceed to another, you would maybe vote to take that to the next meeting, and then you would take public comment at the meeting following that.
Somewhere around that idea, right?
And I don't think, I don't think we were setting a specific date.
No, not at all.
Maybe we could set our next planning meeting date today. Is that possible?
Next study session on this, it's possible with me.
Are you in agreement?
Am I what?
Are you in agreement on that? A sense like where there's still something that's, we're fuzzy on.
Yeah, probably, the ninth is, will probably be too soon.
The ninth is when they're going to, that'll be the next meeting since you adopted the other guidelines. So that is when the planning, or Mark from the planning department will bring that to the commission for your initial review of it at this meeting.
Ken, why don't we just set a meeting for next Tuesday and have them bring it then? And then get in, get into it.
Do you want to have that in the afternoon, or do you want to have it in the evening?
I just assume do it on Tuesday at nine and... Because, are you saying we're not meeting next Tuesday? To you, based on what we were intending to do, but we're going to have to meet sometime on it. You don't have to be...
I forgot, we weren't meeting there, so that next Tuesday?
I'm still in the rut there, so we can keep going every Tuesday for another week.
Yeah.
What do you think?
Can we understand that's a work, that's a work?
Work-study session.
Right.
Yes.
No public participation?
No public participation, that's what I believe. Daniel and Commissioner Sellers, is that your impression, rather than having?
Well, that's somewhat sooner than I expected, but if that's the consensus of you two, I'll be prepared with my thoughts by then.
I'm flexible, if you need more time.
Yeah, I am too.
You know, to me, this is such a vital issue, pro or con, no matter which side, or if you're in the middle, it's such an important issue that I guess I just would rather not rush this and make sure that everybody has the data that they want to consider as an individual commissioner before we move too far.
Well, I really...
And I'm not there yet, I'll just, I'll admit it. I've got questions that I need to ask before I can come up with the consensus of where I'm willing to move to. And obviously, it takes two votes agreeing to move something forward.
Commissioners, are you wanting, just so I can clarify, do you want planning staff, Mark, to bring this to the commission first? So that you formally receive it in a normal commission meeting before you have a study session?
No, I don't think that's the intent at all, is it? I think we have a work-study session to kind of work out some details and discuss these things before, and then present it to, to be written up.
Well, it...
Is that right?
I think whether, they have to do the formality of giving it to us, right? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Was that right?
That process.
Joe, do you?
Commissioners, what are you working on if it hasn't been presented to you formally?
I think that's where you're at, Mr. Chairman. I think there was some confusion on the next red line, on when they would deliver that back to us. Like, I think it would be easiest if our next study session, that they just bring it for review, and then we review it, redline it at that point. Do it all in the same meeting.
So, do you want to have a, like, whether it's next week or two or three weeks, have a special commission meeting? And at that time, Mark from planning staff can bring it to present to you, and then you guys can make the decision you want to work on revisions?
We work on any differences that we have.
And you can just do it there?
Quite frankly, we've...
If there's something else on the agenda?
We've had this information for ages, it's been presented to us. We should know already, in my opinion, kind of what the data has already been presented. And we just got to decide which one of data we want to, we want to look at and discuss. I mean, we've had twenty-seven booklets, I mean, and been to the sessions.
Well, the two of you want to do this meeting on the second?
I'm okay with doing it two weeks from then too, if you'd like. If you need another couple of weeks.
If you had the planning department, or Mark and Don, bring it to you on the ninth.
Okay.
But there may not be time unless you wanted to adjourn until the afternoon to have a study session. There's other items on that, that meeting, but
I'm okay with that.
It could be put at the very end of the meeting also.
I mean, and I doubt that you're looking at any sort of formal presentation from them at that time.
No.
Just a formality.
Yep.
Like presenting the articles of impeachment. I'm sorry.
What do you think, two weeks from today? Does that make you feel more comfortable?
That's the ninth.
Ninth, in the afternoon?
I'd say we just keep going. I don't know why we got to stop. If you guys would like to stop till then.
If you guys want to do, I could put it on the agenda at the very end of the agenda. I know they're going to do the bonds, the bond approval will be here that day. There's, I'm sure, other items, since it's skipping a week on the commission meeting.
We could recess for lunch and come back.
Okay, okay.
And the understanding on the ninth, it's a discussion between the three commissioners on a proposed document that will be brought before us at a later date, where the public will be able to comment on that document.
With staff available for questions?
Okay, I think a ninth is great.
Okay.
I think also on that date, I think planning staff has taken enough notes with respect to your original work session, that they go back over that and re-identify for you areas where you were thinking about some changes or revisions minor or otherwise. So I think probably they could help lead you through that. Doesn't mean you're tied to those issues, but I think we can go back to maybe identifying where we were the last time, if that's acceptable.
And I'm happy to provide some pre-meeting input on where I'm at, if that will help the staff.
That could be helpful.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear it, Dan.
I'm sorry, I would be, I said, I for one would be happy to provide some pre-meeting input to staff on where I'm at, so they could be thinking and...
I think we kind of left it that way at our last study session.
Yeah.
For that meeting on the ninth, that'll be, because it'll be part of the regular commission meeting. Even if you adjourn, then we'll just stay here in the commission chambers, and we can have it televised, the continuance of the commission meeting.
We can recess if we need to. We can recess if we need to for lunch, or whatever, if we need to.
Right.
And come back at set time, okay?
Sounds good.
That'd be nice.
Well, have we got that resolved for now?
I think so. Do we need a, I guess, since it's on the regular scheduled meeting, we don't need a motion for that either?
No, I don't think so, we don't need a motion for any of that. It's just part of the agenda.
Okay.
Make it easier, okay. So, county administrators report?
Couple items I wanted to... On the first one, kind of get a general consent from the commission, don't need a vote. But the sewer districts number one and, or 201 and 202, Yoder and Habit, have issues, and I kind of have let you guys know in a report what's going on there. That's a lot of money, that's going to need to be invested or financed over time. That's a lot of money that's gonna need to be invested or financed over time in those districts at some point to be able to, I guess, work on the project to improve the sewer districts to meet KDHE standards. The, it was recommended to Don and I that we fill out a pre-application form for the Kansas State Revolving Fund and this would get us on the intended use list by the state if, if we were to do it sometime this, this year. And so I have the application, explains the project, the problem, what's with the project, how it will be resolved. It's a $2.99 million project and it would be financed at some point with the, those two sewer districts. But I wanted to make sure you're okay with getting this on the intended use list by submitting this application by the end of this month.
Now, Randy, would that be, that 2.99 million, is that separate units or combined units?
That's combining, combining.
So maximum cost?
Yes. Well, of the engineer's estimates at this point, so.
Of the engineer's estimate, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Do you need a motion on that?
No, I just want to make sure you're okay with it, because it doesn't bind us to anything, it doesn't bind us financially, it's just to get us on a list saying we intend to apply for this. The way this would work is we could get a, I guess it's kind of like a grant waiver of a certain dollar amount to write off part of that cost. And it's up to a million dollars is, would be eligible to, to waive. Not sure if we'll get that amount, but that would be a huge savings for that, those two districts. Those two districts have about a total of right around 100 users.
I think all three of us are pretty well used to that revolving, I know about that revolving lots on your garden of wastewater, so, yes.
Okay. The other item, just wanted to formally notify you that Reno-Kingman Joint District, Fire District Number One, Rick Greber, the fire chief, sent a letter stating that he wanted permission or intended to increase the stipend for his assistant chief to $1,750. And there's a resolution 2012 that states that this, to do this, it, it takes a letter notifying the county commission or the fire district governing body, which is what you guys are to, not to approve, but to be notified of that. That's still less than, or it's half of what the fire chief makes and so it falls within the resolution. So I'm just notifying you of that.
Do, do you feel like that's gonna increase the, the levy in that district?
No.
Okay.
They have, they have enough money, they're, they'll be okay. And those were the only items I had.
I have, I have one ask, comment. In the past, when there's been a, a, a community, a city or an area that has some major projects or concerns or information to present like we did at Bueller, I would, I would ask permission and your thoughts on getting together with Randy and Don to schedule a meeting down in the Yoder-Habit area to, to inform the public why and, and go over the information and the needs and why this has come about. Somewhere, I'd like permission to try to schedule a meeting down there with the public.
That's a good idea.
Okay. Counselor?
None.
Thank.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Look, go on, Commissioner Friesen?
Uh, yeah, I, I wanted, wanted to update the commission and, and again, get consent on, 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 on an ongoing effort. So, uh, early on, I started meeting occasionally with some, the health department, Randy, and some of the health officials just to kind of get up to speed on things and I, I found it highly beneficial, beneficial and, and since then, and especially now in, in the, in the recent weeks, I think, I think staff and if Randy wants to comment, has found it valuable to have a commissioner available to, to assist and, you know, back up and, and provide feedback on, on some of the rapid decision-making that's being, needed to be made and/or just, you know, just somebody that can, can bring back what's going on behind the scenes from a commission, commissioner's perspective. And so, I, that's kind of been unofficial and kind of fell into that role just based on, on trying to get up to speed. But I'd like to see if, if the commission would be permissible to, to allow me to continue that. Just kind of on a, not necessarily a designated position, but just continue to, to offer myself as, as a commission representative to, to, to those discussions when they feel like a commissioner's needed. I didn't know what your guys' thoughts was and.
Are you speaking primarily at these group health calls that we have weekly? That you could be on those, uh, obviously all of us can or it's a violation of an open meeting?
Yeah.
And, and is that what you're wanting to do, Daniel?
So, yeah, I, so some of it's been recently, you know, and it's been helpful for me and I want to, I want to relay in, in my comments how much work is going on behind the scenes and how difficult it is to kind of line up projects like a vaccination signup, a vaccination pod. And, and I'm hopeful, you know, you're getting information from Randy, but just during those discussions, yeah, they're, they're speaking either with emergency management, the health department and, and health, health officials, health experts in the county and just having a commissioner on there, I think, has, has been valuable. And some of the things, they're, they're, they're working very hard to get it right before it comes to the public and it's, you know, just, I just wanted to relay my observation of how difficult it is to, to plan in this example for a vaccination effort when they have no idea when the vaccinations are going to come and how many and when. And, and that, that's been one of my, my greatest observations is they're working really hard to plan, but they don't know whether next week they're gonna get 500 or 5,000 doses. And, and so I think it's highly imperative that one of us stays involved behind the scenes in those discussions and I'd like to offer to do that where I can and, and weekly bring back my observations to this commission so, so, so we can stay involved without breaking open meetings regulations.
And all three of us can be on the phone call or we can be on Zoom, but only one of us has, has the ability to speak to maintain the open meetings law. Is that correct, Randy?
Yes, only one of you can speak on behalf of, yeah.
Only one.
Talking about county business on, for open meetings.
I, I don't have any problem with what Daniel's suggesting and.
It's a good idea.
And I concur about how difficult these things are and the behind the scenes work it takes to make it happen, but we're demanding it be made to happen and so forth and, and I don't have any problem with his direction he's asking to go.
I agree.
Okay, and, and I'm happy at any time if, if the commission changes its position, just bring it up. I, I printed out this from the Wall Street Journal and it, it's, it's, you know, the, the title's COVID-19 vaccines are getting stuck at the last step. And it's just a reminder to us where our, our local officials and the people on the front lines absolutely want to do the right things and, and get this vaccination out, but sometimes they're not getting the resources or the help they need to do it. And, you know, on behalf of the commission, I've relayed to that group that I believe we're, we're in agreement here that any resources they need, they need to be, they need to speak up and ask for them because, at least from my point of view, as I stated last week, this process is highly important and to relay to them how important it is that any, any vaccinations we get, they're immediately delivered. From my understanding, a, a key component of getting more is that you use all the ones you have and it sounds like we're getting a weekly delivery now. And so I encourage them to, to make sure that's happening. It sounds like the registration process is, is imminent, if not being released today. And, you know, I concur with, with our staff that, you know, their, their position is we absolutely have to have a single signup for the entire county so everybody knows the one place to go. And, you know, Carla and Adam aren't here today, that's because they're, they're deep into finishing that and, and that's the only reason they're, they're not here. But I know they're working on it at, at all hours of the day and I know they're working on, on getting a, a pod location set up so we can get every vaccine that we have that has been delivered to us out this week. And so I expect more of that to be forthcoming very soon from them. But I'm glad they're, they're, they're working on that, not sitting in here listening to us talk about it. So I hope that updates you guys on where we're at. Randy, did you have anything else?
Yeah, there is a press release that is getting, will be probably prepared today to go out to notify, to talk about what Commissioner Friesen's signing up on the pod and the, the sign, or the signup spot that is currently active on the Reno County website. It is out there right now. We'll send a press release soon that notifies people about it.
And I just, one last comment on that. And this is so challenging to, to coordinate public and private partnerships and, and all of the health entities together and, and staff's doing a, a good job and they're working very hard and I just want to, you know, publicly, you know, say my appreciation for the clinic Prairie Star and the hospital and their efforts to work with us. And I know it's been a little challenging and, and I just, I just want to encourage them to keep up the, the partnership because it's, this is the critical time that we work together to get this vaccination out. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for, for that time.
Thanks for your work. Commissioner Sellers?
Yes, I was very pleased with the department report made by AGING and, and ARCAT this morning and I know we're planning on doing more of that this year and it, it's a good refreshing deal to see those department reports and so I'm glad that we're gonna see more of those. I'm very glad that, as the administrator just said, that the signup is now active on the website and so people can start signing up for this vaccination.
And it's really a, just to clarify, I said signup, it's a preregistration.
Pre-registration.
So it won't set you a time, but it will register, get you preregistration for it.
Okay, because that's been promised for two or three weeks now and so I'm very pleased that that is active and available to, what, anybody over 65 to be signed?
The current phase, phase is over 65 and with underlying.
Health conditions, which will be considered in that. I think the final thing that I've, would like to mention today is I appreciated the additional use of technology that we're trying to provide the people watching our meeting at home. I'm assuming, am I, is my assumption correct? Is whatever we're seeing on that screen is what's being seen by?
The, with the cameras, they can see that. I know it's kind of small print zoomed out for the agenda, but yes.
Okay, so if that's up there, they're not seeing us, is, is that the?
No, they're still seeing you, they're seeing the view, they see it in the background.
I see.
We're working on setting it up to where the agenda is also being shown.
Okay, well, anyway, I know it's a work in process, but I'm glad that we're doing a more thorough job of providing information to the public that's watching our meeting of what's going on. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just want to remind everybody and, and so there is a Saturday morning, this Saturday morning, nine o'clock, a work study on discussion of goals for the commission and it'll be held in the annex. Do we know which door to go in yet?
Um, I believe it's gonna be the west door.
West door, okay, to the west door. And it is a, all three of us are there, so it is an open meeting and it'll be held in the conference room, which is clear to the east end of the building once you get inside. This Thursday, I attended the first K-96 corridor board meeting that we've had in about a year since it all came about. And just a little comment with regard to that, this was formed several years ago, 2005, I believe, and with four, the four cities and the two counties. And it started out as a, just strictly a governmental and it has changed over to a quasi-governmental plus the majority of the funds for this come from businesses and patrons along the corridor as well as added a couple more communities that have joined. And Kayleen reported that she's really enjoyed working and I've heard this from Deborah too, too full, that how well that the K-96 corridor director and Hutter Reno County Chamber work together. I know they work with Haven quite a bit also because of some needs down there that Haven has. She has had in 2020, 21 inquiries from people inquiring about locations and properties and, and buildings and of those 21, she has, she has really targeted those businesses that have a requirement that's a building of 50,000 square foot or less because in our region, it's difficult to even think about 200, 250,000 square foot building. So they've kind of narrowed that down and, so I just wanted to report that. Also, Kansas Association of Counties, have you all received that email with regard to the health boards? Meetings, the information, Randy, do you want to comment about that?
Um, that was an email I think it's in yesterday and I can forward that, it'll be a webinar or Zoom.
Yeah, four sessions webinar.
Yeah, and I can get that. It's the Future of Rural Healthcare in Kansas, a series of regional conversations. So I can forward that email.
Yeah, please do that. And, you know, I, I, I would have liked to probably have the comments for, for WEX at our, at our study session, but I, I understand where you're all coming from. So I, I don't have any problem with how we worked that out. And basically, I think that's all I have to say. So if there's no further comments, why, meeting is adjourned.